All right, good evening, everyone. And welcome to June 10th, Macon County Board of Commission meeting. I ask you guys to bear with us. It's a full house, tight quarters, but I think we've got adequate space. I want to start off with announcements. Mr. Cade?
Mr. Chairman, I actually have a couple. First one is on your agenda. This meeting tonight is the annual opioid meeting with municipalities. And Macon County, we invited folks from both of those municipalities to come. And of course, Russ Harris is going to speak a little later on. He's more well-versed at that than I am, so this is serving as our annual meeting. I want to make people aware that on Monday, June 16th, at 5:30, is the Elder Abuse Awareness Walk that occurs every year that senior services participates in. They'll meet down at the gazebo Monday at 5:30 for that Elder Awareness Walk. And then, third thing, for Mr. Sherrill, Commissioner Braden and I, and actually you had been at one of the previous meetings, planning the fireworks in the park, so we just want to make the announcement again that the fireworks display will return to the rec park out on the Georgia Road this year. And there's entertainment lined up, activities started before, they're having cornhole tournament. We've got a fairly long list of vendors, so this is a good kickoff for us to get the rec park started off again.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Breeden?
Mr. Antoine?
Ms. Tammy, I'm sorry I skipped you.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Mr. Shields?
The only thing I would like to say is thank you for being here. Learn to agree to disagree in a respectful manner.
Thank you. Mr. Sherrill?
Manager covered what I was going to talk about, so I'm excited about the activities and stuff that's going back into the park for the 4th of July. And it's a lot of entertainment, food trucks, there'll be bouncy houses for the children, there's concerts going to be out there. I think it's going to be great for the community too. It's going to be wonderful.
All right, thank you. Ms. Lori? Mr. Reddner?
I'm good.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Shields to lead us in a moment of silence in a pledge of allegiance.
Please rise. Thank you.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, we do have a public hearing tonight. I'm going to wait patiently for the sign-up sheet.
I think we have some folks who signed up on the wrong sheet.
Okay.
So I'm sure that they meant to be on this one.
I'll open it up and I'll give them the opportunity to speak. Thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2526 budget. We have three people signed up to speak. And number one, John Courtney. And Mr. Courtney, if you signed up for the Colosseia Fire Department, I would like to put your name on the public comment sign-up sheet instead of the public hearing sign-up sheet. Okay, is that okay?
Sure.
All right. All right, Betsy Carson?
I'm on the wrong sheet.
Okay, it's okay, it's okay. And then, Betsy Best?
I have one thing to say. We pay our taxes, so you spend our money. Please, spend our money. That's the point of it. Not to hold on to it, not to save it for a rainy day. We have a large, large fund for rainy days. Every time we put off spending, it gets more expensive. Every time. Prices are not going down, so I'm asking you, please, fund the things that our county needs in its budgets. That's all. It's my money too, and I want you to spend it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last call for a public hearing, fiscal year 2526 budget. Anybody else come to speak?
Mr. Chairman, if any of those folks that were on the wrong sheet wanted to speak about the Colosseia tax rate, they probably need to speak during the public hearing.
Okay.
It's budget-related.
Well, you may have to help me with this. Half of this sheet is Colosseia Fire Department, and they signed up for the public comment.
May I have some?
How do you want to do this, Ms. Tammy?
I think if it is in regard to the tax rate and what's related to the budget, they need to speak during the public hearing.
Let's just go down the list, Mr. Bird. And if it says Colosseia on here, I think we'll just allow them to speak.
Would you like me just choose a few to speak?
If it's okay, we have time, let me just go down the list. They showed up in person, I feel like that's only fair. Don Willis?
Good evening, gentlemen, and thank you very much for your time to talk tonight. Those of you that don't know me, or don't know me, my name is Don Willis, and I'm a resident of the Colosseia Fire District. I'm in favor of the tax increase for the Colosseia Fire Department, and this is why. I've been in their shoes. I was also a volunteer firefighter with the Franklin Fire Department, and I was also a fire marshal with Macon County in the 1990s. As most of you know, I retired from the Macon County Sheriff's Office in 2021. Since 2008, the Colosseia Fire Department has only asked for one tax increase over 17 years. Our firefighters, along with all our first responders, risk life in the end. Every time they're called, we respond to an emergency event. These men and women meet every week to train, to educate themselves in the latest technology to serve us in our community. They respond to structured fires, wildland fires, water rescue, medical emergencies, vehicle accidents, to just name a few. To maintain a high level of emergency response, trucks are required to have annual pump tests. NFPA, which is the National Fire Protection Agency, requires fire departments to perform annual pump tests on all fire engines. These tests verify the engine's ability to deliver water at a specified pressure and flow rate. The truck in question, I'm told, is 30 years old. According to the National Fire Protection Agency, fire apparatus should be retired after 25 years of service. However, after 15 years of frontline service, which is your number-one truck going out, they can be transitioned to reserve status or put into like a substation. It would be your second response trucks. We must remember, these trucks work in the mountains and are under some harsh conditions. If I have a fire at my house, I want to be assured that the fire truck will work adequately and pump water when needed. When I look at the cost of the tax increase of a penny, will cost homeowners, they have a home of $200,000, that's only $20 more a year in tax. If your home is worth $300,000, that's $30 more a year. Currently, the Colosseia Fire Department tax rate is .48. I pay $151 a year. That would increase mine to $12.58 a month. The increase would cost me approximately $3.50 a month. So what is your home and loved ones' worth ensuring the needs of the community are met? I know I want the best for my community, and if my house and I have a need, you know, I want to make sure that the equipment works properly. So yes, I'm in favor of the tax increase and would ask the commissioners to vote yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. David Dabney?
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us to come up and speak before you today. I'm a volunteer with the Colosseia Volunteer Fire Department. In 2011, my wife and I purchased property here in the upper L E J area, and we're more than five miles from the fire department. So the fire, the insurance companies don't like us up that way. They charge us a lot of money. But anyway, I'd been there around 2017, I got to wondering why my insurance bill was so high. So I went to them and talked to them, and they said, "Well, you're outside the five-mile limit from either a fire station or a substation." And so that's when my interest started picking up with the fire department. So I guess about five years ago, I became a member of the volunteer fire department, and I realized at that point in time that, back in 2017, I went to the fire department and talked to them about trying to get a substation close to us, and the guy said, "Well, we don't have the funding." And then I found out that the last time they had a tax increase was 2008, so that was kind of self-explanatory. I hate to see our department get in that type of situation again. When we had our last tax increase, the fire department had three main goals to do, and they met all three of them. And that was to hire full-time, another full-time person, so we have two full-time persons. Second thing was to get another fire truck on order, which had been done, but it hadn't been delivered. And the problem with fire trucks is it takes three years just about to get them. You can't go out on the street and buy one. So that brings up another point. Oh, the third thing was, they decided to get a substation. And we're able to get one going up on the L E J road, just past the Little L E J, and it's just about complete. I would suspect in the next month, it'll be ready for inspection. But anyway, that brings us to the point today, our trucks are dated 1992, 1994, 2006. Those older trucks are a problem. They're running good right now, don't have any miles on them, but you can't get parts for them a lot of times. So if one goes down, it's down for a while. We open this substation, we're going to have a fire apparatus up there, which is good for that part of the neighborhood, and it'll help us with our tax increase. So that's, I would like to see the one-cent tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, John Courtney?
I'm John Courtney. I'm the chaplain at Colosseia Gorge Fire and Rescue. I'm here today to discuss a matter of vital importance to our community, the urgent need to replace our volunteer fire departments' aging fire trucks. For decades, our dedicated volunteer firefighters have served Macon County tirelessly, responding to emergencies, protecting lives and property, and ensuring that our local community receives the same level of fire protection as more urban areas. However, they're doing so with fire trucks that are now 30 years old. While our team has worked diligently to maintain them, they're no longer meeting the safety standards needed for effective emergency response. We're asking the county to approve a modest 1% tax increase for our volunteer fire department to fund the purchase of new fire trucks. And here's why the investment is critical. Number one, emergency response efficiency. Older fire trucks are more prone to mechanical failures delaying response times. In life-threatening situations such as house fires, vehicle accidents, and medical emergencies, every second counts. Number two, safety for our firefighters and community. Modern fire trucks are equipped with updated technology that ensures greater safety for firefighters, allowing them to perform rescues more effectively with fewer risks. Number three, long-term cost savings. While the upfront cost of a fire truck may seem substantial, continuing to repair and maintain an outdated vehicle will cost the county more in the long run with frequent breakdowns and increasingly expensive parts. Investing in new equipment now is physically, physical responsibility for the future. And number four, community protection and insurance benefits. Adequate fire protection impacts homeowners' insurance premiums. Many insurers base rates on local fire department equipment and response times. Upgrading our department's equipment can help keep rates affordable for residents. This modest tax increase will allow us to continue providing essential fire and emergency services without burdening individual households significantly. For most taxpayers, this increase represents only a few extra dollars a year, yet the impact it will have on emergency response and community safety is priceless. I urge you to consider this request with the seriousness it deserves. The safety of our community depends on a fire department equipped with modern and reliable tools. Investing in new fire trucks will ensure that our volunteer firefighters can continue protecting the lives, homes, and businesses of Macon County for years to come. Thank you for your time and consideration. I welcome any questions and hope to work with you to make this essential upgrade a reality.
Thank you, Mr. Courtney. Chad Stone?
Thank you, guys. My name's Chad Stone. I am a lieutenant with the Colosseia Gorge Fire Department, and I'm also a paid, one of their employees. In 1994, I got married to my wife, Angie, moved to Bryson Ranch, and lived in Colosseia ever since. Graduated high school in 92, which shields my principal. 1997, I decided I was going to become a volunteer fireman. Been there ever since. Still see the same trucks there that I saw in 1997. And now I'm in charge of keeping those trucks maintained up and running. Getting a little difficult. And we do buy, over the years, we have got a new truck. It's an '06, still gets some age on it. We have a '19, it's a mini pumper, made for getting areas the big trucks can't. My fight is, even though I'm an employee, I'm also a taxpayer. I live in Colosseia, and I want my money to be used wisely. I want to see where my money goes. I'm going to use an example. I bought a mattress not too long ago. I paid over $300 in sales tax and over $100 in Macon County sales tax on one mattress. I don't know where that money goes. It goes to the county, it goes to the state, but I know where my fire tax money goes. And I would like to see it used as an increase to use to help us fund a new truck. I'm not, nobody wants to pay taxes, but unfortunately, in today's fire service for here, we can't raise $500,000, the cost of a truck. In 2022, when they came to you asking for a rate increase, which the board gave, we had three stipulations, a new, a second firefighter, a truck, a substation. Those have been met. We're asking for help with the second truck to help replace the water that is leaving our station, that is replacing a 30-plus-year-old truck. Thank you.
All right, Glenda Cook?
Good evening, Chairman Young, Commissioners, members of the public who are here. I thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Glenda Cook. I am a resident of the Colosseia community and a longtime member of Colosseia Gorge Fire and Rescue. I'm here this evening to respectfully bring to you, to your attention, our department's urgent need for new fire apparatus, specifically a tank or an engine, and to explain why we are requesting a 1-cent tax increase to help cover the cost of purchasing these vital apparatus. Our current tank or an engine are each approximately 30 years old each. According to NFPA 1900 standards, frontline fire apparatuses should no longer be older than 15 years. After that, they are recommended to be moved to reserve status. And at 25 years, to be removed from service entirely. While these standards are not legally mandated, they are considered industry's best practices and are crucial to ensure safety, effective operations, and reducing the risk of liability. When we begin to evaluate the need to replace our equipment, we considered several factors. Number one, repair and maintenance. As vehicles age, maintenance costs escalate, parts become harder to find, and major system repairs often outweigh the value of keeping the apparatuses in service. Number two, operational downtime. Aging apparatuses experience more frequent and extended downtime directly affecting response capability and increasing risk to the community. Required testing, older units more likely to fail, are more likely to fail pump tests, which can negatively impact our ISO rating and ultimately raise homeowners' insurance premiums across the community. Number four, outdated technology. Firefighting equipment continues to evolve, but older vehicles may not be compatible with newer systems without costly retrofits. Number five, resale value or trade value. Fire apparatuses lose value rapidly, often depreciating by half in the first five years and continuing to decline annually. Delaying replacement reduces what we can recover when retiring a vehicle. The needs and expectations of Colosseia community must be considered. Our ability to respond quickly and effectively to emergencies depends on reliable equipment. In a community without fire hydrants, water must be transported from local rivers and streams using our trucks or those from mutual aid departments. When minutes matter, the ability to move water safely and efficiently is critical to prevent a disaster. We do not take this request lightly. The recent surge in fire apparatus cost has made it increasingly, increasingly difficult for small rural departments like ours to keep pace. But after evaluating the full picture, service life, maintenance, response capability, and evolving needs of our community, we believe that this 1-cent increase is necessary, responsible, and justified. In closing, I ask you to strongly consider approving this modest increase, not just to replacing aging equipment, but to ensure Colosseia Gorge Fire and Rescue can continue to protect our neighbors, our families, and our homes every hour of every day, all year long. Thank you again for your time and for allowing me to share our department's concerns and commitment with you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. All right, Dean Cook?
My name's Dean Cook. I'm the chief of Colosseia, have been for six months this time. Been there 34 years. I sat on the truck committee for all the trucks that they've been talking about when we got them. A whole lot cheaper back then. And I don't know what else I can say that they've not said, but I would really appreciate if you all would consider the one penny. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. All right, Betsy Carson?
Hello, thanks for allowing me to speak. I volunteer at the Colosseia Fire and Rescue. It's a great group of people. They work very hard. Last week, when we were discussing the 1-cent increase, I went to all my neighbors on River Rock Lane to talk to them about what this increase would mean for them, not just money-wise, but for how important it was for us to be able to maintain the equipment that we have at the fire station. My neighbors range, homeowners range in age from 28 to 95. Every single person said that they would love to support this initiative and hope that we would get the 1-cent increase. And my 95-year-old neighbor said, "Why don't we get 2 cents?" It was so little. Thank you so much, and I hope you'll support us.
Thank you. All right. Does anybody else like to speak about the Colosseia? Mr. Bird?
Momentarily. I've done my best to sell this. I've said bad all I can say, but I'm going to tell you what I have done. I can get this to the court. We had a petition. Didn't have a lot of time. About eight days altogether.
Thank you, Joe.
In that petition, I'm going to tell you the numbers that we got. And I'm going to explain something before I hand them over. The total number of signatures was 318, all in favor of the 1 cent. But I have to qualify this. Some of the, some of the signatures were taken in a manner that I do not consider correct. So what we're going to do is, out of those, there were some taken at a filling station, two different filling stations, I'm going to subtract 70 signatures right off the bat. Now, the signatures that we have left with addresses and most with phone numbers, 97, we can verify they're in Colosseia right now. We had a number of people who signed. Their signatures are not legible. They're useless to us unless we can verify them. But out of the ones that we had, we had 132 that were legible. That's what I've gotten.
How many residents are in there? All right. Would anybody else like to speak pertaining to Colosseia Fire and Rescue? Anybody else? At this time, I'll close the public hearing. All right, gentlemen, let's just bring this up for discussion.
Colosseia tax increase?
Yes, sir.
Okay. First question I'll ask, how many residents are there in Colosseia Fire District? How many residents are there in Colosseia Fire District? Okay, so you've got 120-something. How many of those signatures were special interest people with the fire department?
Talked about firemen.
Firemen, firemen's families.
They were door-to-door.
Okay, all right.
Door-to-door.
So how many was it, 120?
There was about, I think, hang on. Takes around, I worked all day Saturday, and I was able to get 22 signatures. The total would be with addresses, 97. I could not verify the 132 because I just don't have the time to do that. that. So we have ninety-seven we don't verify right now. There's a hundred and thirty-two that need to be looked at. The total would fall to two hundred and thirty-eight total, once we subtract the seven.
Next question, how many of your apparatus has actually failed the pump test? Has any of them failed?
Yeah.
Okay, none of them has failed. What, what was used for your board and the fire department to approve a substation in Elahay and not on Buck Creek?
We would love to have one on Buck Creek.
Well, what made you choose to have one in Elahay and not Buck Creek? Because it's my understanding, we had, we had an opportunity to, for Highlands and Colosseia to share. They withdrew it because there was no restroom. And there's a man up there that was willing to put in a restroom in that facility, and it was denied. So that man that was gonna build that restroom spends thirty-some thousand dollars a year in insurance. So it's not unique to Upper Elahay. So whenever you're talking about building a substation, the people that are gonna be impacted by that substation are the ones that's gonna get a better insurance rate. Highlands people built their substation out of their pocket, so they knew they would be able to pay for that. So all the people in Colosseia Fire District is gonna pump in money for a substation, and, and the real true benefits are the people that are gonna get a reduced insurance rate in Upper Elahay. Okay. The next question that I will have is. Okay, okay. Okay. So. Let's see here. So how long have you had one full-time paid firefighter?
How long you been there, Chad?
Since twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, so twenty-twenty-two, that's the same.
First one.
That's the same timeframe you got a tax increase in twenty-twenty-two. Let's see here.
I'm not the first full-time firefighter.
Okay, but, so you've hired the second full-time firefighter. When did that happen?
Uh, when did you, how? Year?
Within the year?
I believe so.
He's been there over a year.
Over a year.
Okay.
You can't just go out and hire, hire some one off the street.
I understand, but these trucks didn't become thirty years old in the last year either.
No, they didn't.
So, so the whole point of this is this has been the problem through the fire departments. You've got Nana Halo over there, they pay zero. They have no issues in their department. They don't pay anybody, they don't pay any calls. You've got Mountain Valley over there, they don't pay anybody, they don't have any issues. And they have the, the lowest budget of any fire department in Macon County. All right? So, so the, the real issue with, for me, is the fact that we have thirty-year-old trucks that we knew that the, the recommendation for them not to be longer than fifteen to twenty years, but yet we ignored it, we put people on the payroll, and we built a substation. And so it seems to me like you would want to replace this apparatus when it became twenty years old and not when it's thirty years old. But here's, here's, here's what, and I got some stuff here written down about the, and I've said it before, and the most of you people have heard me say it before, I'm a retired firefighter from Highlands, North Carolina. I spent twenty-two and a half years on that fire department, and I left the fire department because I got sick and tired of the waste that I saw in that fire department. When I left, we had three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar budget. Now they have a one-point-two million dollar budget. So that's why I left the fire department. I left at forty-one years old. I love firefighting and everything else. So I'm not against the fire departments, I'm not against all this other stuff, but the, the problem, the conversation that we had, you ordered this truck, it's gonna be here in October, you paid four hundred some thousand dollars for it.
With that one.
Okay? Fifteen years financed at sixty thousand dollars a year, that's nine hundred thousand dollars. We can do better than this. I've had a conversation with the county manager about this. We've also had the conversations that instead of every, the eleven fire departments out here in the county buying five sets of turnout gear and three air-packed bottles and, and four pairs of boots, we do this as a bulk, we could probably get a better deal on this. So the town of Franklin oversees Franklin Fire Department. The town of Highlands oversees Highlands Fire Department. The other nine fire departments, nobody's overseeing them except for Board of Directors and the firefighters. Well, I think it's time the county gets involved in this and see what we can do to better this. And if you need one apparatus or you need two apparatus, it, it, it's, it's tough. I mean, it, it's tough for me to swallow the fact that this is not something that just happened. This is something that's been going on for a long time. And, and so, and I'm just gonna put it out here right now. I would recommend your department have an audit of your books, but possibly a forensic audit of your books, and report it back to the county manager. And if, if we do that, and we can get you a, a truck somehow or another, but I, I can't, I can't support it. I didn't have the same results you guys did. I'm sorry, I mean, I may have, just didn't go to the, to the right people or whatever, but I got zero response out of anybody. I talked to probably fifty to sixty.
Yeah, well, we got well over a hundred plus.
Well, there was a whole bunch of you out there, and I didn't, I just saw people. Okay, well, all right. I, I mean, I am grateful for the work y'all do and everything else, but there's a lot more to this than what you're asking.
Well, I, I was asked if I had the support of the community, and I believe that I do.
Okay. I'm done.
All right, anybody else?
We considered buying a fire truck. We didn't just go off the street with the first thing we looked at. This truck committee, they went out, they got prices from A1, they got prices from another company, they got prices from another company, they got prices from Toine. Then they sat down and they looked, and they specked out what we needed. What we needed, not what we wanted. You don't get what you want, you buy what you need. They bought what we needed. They specked out what we needed, they sent it back, they got their price list. Then they went in the middle. Just like I'm sure there's several of y'all businessmen, you don't go with the high price, you don't go with the cheap price, you go in the middle. Now, sure, if your cheap is the best, you'll go with the cheap, but you're probably usually gonna go in the middle of the line. I guarantee you, if I pin you down, you're gonna admit to that. But they kinda went in the middle, but that wasn't enough for these guys. They got up bright and early one morning with the salesman. They said, "You go prove to us, you take us and you prove to us what this truck will do." So he got, he met him. Took them to Fosco, North Carolina. Anybody know where Fosco's at? All right. Took them to Fosco, North Carolina, it's up somewhere around Boone, to the terrain like we've got here, so that they would know how these trucks would run and how these trucks would operate with the gearing system, the gearing ratios, and how they would run. They got over there. They wrote, took these trucks, the guy said to me, says, "Oh, you wanna go out here and see how this truck run on four lane?" They looked at him and said, "No, we wanna see what it'll do up the side of the mountain here." So they took a riding truck up the side of the mountain. It didn't give up. So they knew then that they needed a truck like that to handle the terrain here in Macon County. We don't live on four lane, nice little four lane roads up on Elahay or in Highlands or Buck Creek where we answer mutual aid calls. We don't have those nice little four lane paved roads all the way. That's why they chose to go with a Toine truck. After we bought a Toine, talked to Franklin Fire Department, Franklin Fire Department, Franklin Fire Department bought a Toine. Bervard has bought a Toine. Cherokee Fire Department, Cherokee Tribal who's got money to just throw away, they could have bought a Pierce, most expensive thing out there. Guess what they bought? Cherokee Fire Department bought a Toine. So do you think that Colosseia might have bopped things through a little bit before they jumped in and just bop any old truck?
All right, thank you, Mrs. Cook.
Was that, was the truck you're referencing, was that the truck you've already ordered and it'll be here in October?
Yes, sir, and the second truck we have ordered is also a Toine because we know what we're getting.
Commissioner Breeden, step in.
Hey, go ahead. I mean, it's a difficult decision. Jack, you've done a great job presenting this for your fire department, for your community. You know, the, the hard part for me is, is giving an increase on buying a fire truck because you didn't have enough money to buy a fire truck, which sets a precedence for us and any other fire department around here that says, "We need a fire truck, let's go buy one even if we don't have the money for it because they'll bail us out." That's what makes it a difficult decision. It's not about the taxes. I mean, if you raise a tax a penny, you raise a tax a penny. But that's what makes it a difficult decision. And Ms. Glenda, I mean, I'm not trying to be a smart aleck here, but I would probably buy middle of the road or the, the high end if I could, but I wouldn't do it if I didn't have the money. So that makes it, that's what makes it a difficult decision for me to say, "Let's give a tax increase to buy something we knew we didn't have the money for." And if it's not a complete necessity, I mean, it's a, is this a one-engine, it's a one-engine department, one-engine station, what do you call it?
Two-engine station.
But you have one. What, what'd you buy in two thousand and six?
Anchor.
And then you got the mini, how many miles are on those trucks?
I think our first out engine is, hard to judge miles because they sit most of the time, but when they go, they go. It's wide open to stop. Our oldest trucks got over, just over twenty-six thousand miles, but sitting, sitting. And, but there's an idle hours on those two. They don't much leave, they hit it off the back.
So when the pumps are running, they're running hours or miles or whatever. I mean, it's just a difficult decision. Like I said, it's something that you, you plan for, you ask for the increase, you bought one, you did your thing, you bought the fire department, built the fire department, whatever it is, but now you're asking for another increase for a truck that you purchased, but you didn't have the money to purchase it. So I tend to agree with John on that, maybe an audit of the finances would be a, a good idea before we.
Don't think we didn't cut. I cut, we cut, I cut our power bill by fifty cents. We have done away with every little nook. We used to buy sodas, we had a refrigerator with sodas, and we buy those little boxes of bag chips for the firemen, and nope. But we got our bottled waters in there. We'd have Gatorade, keep them in coolers, everybody knows Gatorade, water. We'd find the cheapest water, we got a company in Georgia that will deliver it for ten dollars. Ten cases at a time, buy and bolt, it's cheaper than water. And we, and trust me, if you wanna see the books, our person knows a woman that does them. And she is, I would give my life for that woman. That's not an issue. I have cut, we have cut, we have cut. We have a, we had a three month gap. I cut our phone bill. Colleen taught us a great lesson. We had zero communications. We are now self, as long as our generator has propane, we'll never run into, we'll have our phones and our radio, everything, cell phones, everything. Trust me, the reason why we have thirty-year-old trucks is because the very reason we're standing here right now is that decision. And I begged, I was board member many years ago, and I told them then, "You need a truck." They didn't wanna come up here and cause all this, so now we're here. We're unique. It's time. Twenty-twenty-two, when they ordered the truck, first truck, it was four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Now, that same truck, it's five hundred and fifty thousand. And with the three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar budget that we had last year, we need help.
Yeah. Let me give two cents real quick, Mr. Jack. It's funny you say that, Commissioner Breeden, my comment right here was, what were the plans if you didn't get the money? I feel like I was proud to sit here and support the one-point-six-three cent increase in twenty-twenty-two or twenty-three, and I felt like, you know, Jack had a very, a very compelling argument then. You know, we hadn't had a tax increase in fourteen years, this is gonna, it's gonna get us there, it's a cent and a half, it's a pretty good lick, you know, it's gonna put us kinda right in line, and then you got the truck that you asked for, you got the position you asked for, you got the substation built, and I feel whole about that. I don't feel like we let you down, I feel good about it. And then it's kinda like, to Mr. Breeden's point, you ordered the truck and say, "Well, it, it's kinda like buying a house and not having the, it's buying too big of a house." And I feel like it's gonna set a precedence right here, it's gonna ripple across the county. Just go buy your trucks and go see the commissioners, we have no choice. And pending a forensic audit, I think I would consider this maybe in the future, but at this point in time, I'm sorry, I mean, I do appreciate your time, what you guys do is just, the timing's just terrible. Go ahead, Mr. Jack. Hang on just a second, go ahead, Jack.
We're at the bottom. There's only two or three in the lower. We have deliberately kept our fire speed down year after year. How many times are you sending up your answer? I'll only ask when we need. Yes, we ordered a truck before you had the money. We didn't realize that we didn't have enough. But then we did, once we got all the things and everything laid out and the finances done, then we realized that we were gonna come short. Not this year, next year, it'll be seventy thousand dollars in the hole. If we cancel this truck, we're gonna pay fifty thousand dollars cancellation. But right now, I feel like we're in this boat because we have been very frugal with our money and very interested in keeping the cost down for the community itself. And now I feel like I'm being punished for doing that. Many other fire departments have done a lot more, have done a lot with their money, and I do not have anything to say bad about them. They're in a struggle in every department. The price keeps going up and we're paying the same dime we had in two thousand eight with a one-point-six-three percent increase. That's a very minimal increase. Did you get a cost of living raise of two-point-five? That's a general, that's more than the increase we received in seventeen years.
Thank you, Jack.
All right. I'd like to say, I think I do understand the need that you guys are presenting to us, but at the same time, I would support it, but with an audit. But I have the same concerns after this, if we do support this, how many more departments are we gonna have to run into the same issue with? And we gotta realize, I mean, the funds for this county have gotta be spread all over, it cannot be just all concentrated in one area. And that's the problem that I feel like we run into as a board a lot of times. It's not so much that we just wanna say no, it's just a lot of times the money's just not there for everything to get done. And the question is, how do you pick, how do you pick which one to prioritize? Now, somebody can make an argument and say, "Yes, this is a safety thing," which I get it, but again, it could be a safety thing right now, but how many more departments are we gonna run into the same issue with, and how many of them are we gonna have to say no to? So, difficult decision, I would be in support of this, but with an audit, because I like to be able to just understand a whole lot more just the inner workings of everything. So that's just my stance.
Well, oh, go ahead, Mr..
I wanna say thank you to the people who came, who have come to tonight and spoken for the Colosseia Fire Department. And having heard this community talk, I'm for you getting the one cent.
having heard this community talk, I'm for you getting the one cent, uh, fire increase. And if I'll be given the leeway sometime, I'll make the motion for that. So you know how I stand as you see me right now. But when a motion is required, that's what I'll make. I think the leadership, I think the community has spoken. This is, again, it's about safety, it is a business, and what do you do about the other fire departments? We do the same thing. You, you got your leadership. Gary Shields is not in the Colossated Fire Department. Jack and I have talked. Who am I to look out here and see the people from Colossage, from the fire departments, from the officers in the fire department and say, you don't need it? I would vote for your one cent if the opportunity arises.
Well, the only thing that I was gonna add is, for whatever it's worth, same thing is, I don't go out and hire an employee that I don't have the equipment for them to use. I have to have the equipment and then get the, get the employee and, and I dang sure gotta have the money to pay for it before I order it or before I buy it. And it's just, there again, it, it goes right back to the audit. Jack, you said a minute ago you thought you had the money, but then when you went back through it and you realized you didn't have the money. I mean, that's sort of, that's worrisome that you thought you had it, but you didn't have it. Well, why did you think you have, you had it and you didn't have it? So that's, I think, I think through this whole process, just like they've said, Colossage wants to buy another truck. Oh, let's order it, get a raise, then, then Mountain Valley decides they want to do it, and Auto decides they want to do it and everything else. But, you know, the other thing, if I've questioned, how much debt is in all of our fire departments in Macon County that we don't know? Because I heard the last meeting, something that blew me away. We got a five hundred thousand dollar debt service in our department. How much is out there? I mean, we got a five, how much is our annual budget for all the fire departments in Macon County?
A little over five million.
So we got a five million dollar annual budget in fire departments, but most of your fire departments in debt, and most of your citizens don't even know that you've got a debt. I don't know that you've got a debt unless you tell us. And then before, there's really no conversations between fire departments and county government, except when you need a raise, you need an increase from the taxpayers. Well, I think it's time that the fire departments open up to the Macon County government, and when you, when your board comes up with a plan to buy new fire apparatus, the first thing you do is you come in and you tell the county manager, hey, this is what our board's decided, and see where we go to from here. But I think you guys, it, it's time we get a little transparency going on with these fire departments in Macon County. I'm grateful, and I've said it before and I'll say it again, the fire departments in Macon County was the best thing that ever happened until we got all this money in the fire departments, and this money has ruined our volunteer fire service. And you can like me, you can hate me for whatever it's worth, but that's exactly what it is. You've got a lot of great people, and we just don't have, there's no control. So, I'm done.
All right, let's take action on this and move on.
At this time, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt of the fiscal year twenty-six budget and budget ordinance, a budget ordinance fiscal year twenty twenty-six, no change to Colossage tax rate.
Mr., can I add one thing? Do you want to, do you want to do the tax rate separately and then we can get into discussion on that particular package in case there's anything in the general package you want to change? Would?
I think that's good advice. If you want to retract your motion and just.
I'll retract.
Just vote on the Colossated Fire Department.
So motion, you ready for that?
Yeah, retract your motion and make a motion on.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we adopt the twenty-five, twenty-six budget with no change to Colossage tax rate.
John, my, my recommendation would be just make a motion just on the Colossage tax rate and don't include the budget itself, because then once you approve that rate, because if, if you make that motion, we're approving the whole budget.
Okay.
So if you just, if you just make a motion on the tax rate, then we can approve the rate, then we can discuss further stuff on the budget, make changes if there are any where, so, sorry, I don't mean to be difficult.
That we adopt the twenty-five, twenty-six, no change to Colossage tax rate.
Have a motion by Commissioner Sherrill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Breeden. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your right arm stating aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Please let the record reflect three to, Ms. Tammy.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Give him the change.
Sorry?
Mr. Chairman, if, if you'd like, I can kind of summarize the changes that are in the packet. It's the changes that I gave you, I took a copy of, Lori has put together there. Give everybody a minute to move out.
Definitely. Definitely. That's the way it goes.
So, Mr. Chairman, Lori provided a summary for you there that I gave you a copy of. The changes that were made after the last work session, we included the four EMS positions and deleted the, the new ambulance, replaced that with a remounted ambulance. We included the transport officer position, but we deleted some transport contracted money and some overtime funds. And, and then we moved the entire amount of the contingency fund, which was two hundred thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars into the Macon County Schools' current expense. That left us, we needed to move hundred and six thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars from fund balance into the budget to balance your budget. And at that point, we had a proposed budget of sixty-four million, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars.
All right. All right, gentlemen, I think we've all spent some time at length with the budget. Any other comments, changes? Good, bad, indifferent?
I think the only thing I would like to bring up is the Southwestern Community College capital. So I don't have that in front of me at the moment, but, yeah, I do. The, so, up until twenty twenty-four, we had not given them the capital fund. We, we didn't fund any of their capital. And then all of a sudden, we started funding their capital. And I just think that we need to think about what we're doing there and consider, I would like to see that money go to our public school system. It would be an easy move to move from, because it's still public education, from Southwestern to Macon County Schools. And then if these issues come up at the Grove Center or any of the, any of the properties that we own, we're responsible for fixing them anyway. So when an HC or HVAC unit goes out, come to us and we'll fix it. But until it goes out, I just think that putting a line item in there just out of nowhere, because for years, there was no line item for that. So I just think it would be better spent with our public school system and the kids that were, you know, that we, we look to every day and, and we know in the future. And obviously, this kid at Southwestern do a great thing, Southwestern does a great thing, but Southwestern is a higher education. So I just feel like that's something I would like to take a look at. Our public school system could definitely use it, and if Southwestern needs us to fix a roof or fix an HVAC or fix a whatever, then when it breaks, come to us and give us the opportunity to fix it.
Mr. Cave, how's that affect us from a budget standpoint?
Um, it's actually a fairly easy move in the budget ordinance because your ordinance is not going to change, correct, Lori? The total that you're going to appropriate in that particular org for education won't change. It'll be a line item change for us within the budget, so it's not a, it's not a big deal for us. I guess my question, do, if you want to do that, do you want to do the whole amount or do you want to do, you want to leave a little bit in there to do anything or do you want to wait and? Well, you know, we, we talked about coming back anyway after the budget starts, particularly as we move along, to look at some of the bigger projects as well, so we, we can go any direction you want to go with that.
Can you remind us what, what they had planned on using those funds for?
The money that I'd actually put in there, the hundred twenty-five thousand, six hundred, included replacing the roof on a modular unit, an electrical system, some water heaters, some painting and some railing replacement. I don't have the exact figure in front of me. Roof was the big figure along with the electrical system, which was some inspections that they had done and it needed to be improved. And I think some of the immediate things they were concerned about was the railing replacement and the water heaters.
What about the CD, the driving area out there? What was?
I actually spoke with Dr. Thomas, we discussed that again, and I think they're going to look really hard at coming back to you with a reduced figure, less than eight hundred thousand that was proposed for the driving track. So I would anticipate them coming back at some point with a reduced figure for that, I hope. I also want to remind the board that Dr. Thomas will probably end up having to come back in July because we're going to, we need to start that process on whatever we're going to do with renovation of the armory, which we leased that to them, and part of that lease agreement, we're going to have to make some upgrades to that. And we're already, there's been some funds already committed, Lori, to the actual barn building that's in the capital improvement plan already that we'll, we'll move into a capital account or whatever, not necessarily a capital account, but the right process for them to access that money after the first of July as well.
And how much money would that be going into the Macon County school system?
Lori, if we add a hundred and twenty, if you want to do the whole thing, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred, if we add that to the Macon County Schools, that would be a seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred dollar increase, is that correct, to their operating?
Operating.
We, we up their, actually be a little more of that, we up their, their operating by four hundred thousand in my proposed budget, then we move two hundred thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars in contingency, which is six hundred thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars. And then if we add another hundred thousand of that, that's seven hundred thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars. And then add twenty-five thousand, six hundred to that. I'm out of. I can't get there.
I was like, come on, man, get it.
So the question is.
Seven twenty-five, eight forty-six would be the total increase, if you did the whole one twenty-five, six, sorry, John.
No, if you take that hundred twenty-five thousand dollars and put it over to the Macon County school system, what happens if the, we need to put a roof on something, where's that money coming from?
Well. We, we, I would have to come back and ask for funds out of fund balance.
Which we have plenty of.
The re-roof's forty thousand, just, was it the re-roof of the modular unit is forty thousand is what they had to ask for?
What about the electrical and the handrails?
The electrical, was that the replace electrical distribution, if I'm correct, sixty-five thousand? And what was the other one?
The water heaters, the painting.
Replace water heaters, fifteen thousand. Painting the stairwells, was that one of them?
Yes.
Forty-one hundred, and Grove Center replacing the railing, fifteen hundred.
Why would we not just leave that money? Don't give them the check for the hundred twenty-five thousand. And if we have to do that, then we, we have it budgeted for that repair. Does that work? I mean, it's, I mean, eventually it's going to have to be done, so if they're saying that the quotes are a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, then instead of it being in their checking account, leave it in the county's checking account.
That's the way it works currently.
Yeah, yeah.
I make them replace the capital repair, and then they have to send me an invoice and a check copy, and that's a reimbursement basis, the capital is.
But if we take that hundred twenty-five thousand dollars and turn it over to the Macon County school system, that hundred twenty-five thousand belongs to Macon County school system.
Correct.
And that hundred twenty-five thousand that they're saying they may need is no longer there, it's in Macon County school system. So I think it needs to stay with Macon County and, and if it is not used throughout the year, then it rolls over to the next year.
I, I will make a suggestion. I mean, if, if you, depending on the direction that you want to go, if you want to leave money in there in that account, you can always make another appropriation from fund balance. We've already moved a hundred and six thousand, whatever that figure was there I gave you just a second ago. And you, you could always move another figure if you wanted to, if you're so inclined. That's, that's obviously the discretion of the board.
I mean, ultimately, on a sixty-four million dollar budget, we're talking about a fraction of a percent here, and I feel like if you're talking electrical and a roof, I feel like those are items that are hard to avoid and could potentially cause harm or more damage. If it were painting, Mr. Breeden, I don't think I, I could agree with you. I feel like the electrical and the roof, we're talking a hundred thousand dollars, and it's almost inevitable. So we either pull it out of fund balance or we pull it out of this money. So more or less, we give essentially the school the money out of fund balance or, or it's kind of like having money in either pocket at this point.
Yeah, and I totally understand that, and I agree that, you know, if it has to be done, it has to be done. The question is, does it have to be done? Or are you getting money and you're saying, I want to replace a, a roof on a, on a double wide for forty thousand dollars?
Let's leave it as is, let's have our county inspection, let's have Joe Allen and, and Jack Morgan go out and verify. And if it needs done, we'll have our county representation. If it doesn't, we'll reallocate funds, you know, at that point. How do you feel about that?
Fair enough.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to give them a check.
There does need to be some, you know, it's the same thing. I mean, forty thousand dollars for a roof on basically a, a double wide, that's a lot, that's high, that's real high.
I agree with that.
So if there's no, you know, getting quotes or oversight or anything like that, that's just a, basically a blank check for a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
How do you feel about that?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm okay with that, because I was actually going to tell you, I mean, even if you leave money where it is now, you as a board can change line items in July and August, you, you can, you can, you could come back in August and say, we've looked at this and we've looked at this, and we need to move a hundred thousand dollars from this line item to this line item. Now, obviously, I'll, you know, if I were the recipient of that line item, I would want to know why we moved it from one item to the other, but, but obviously, if you have an explanation, it's, it's your money. As, as you said, Commissioner Sherrill, if it sits on your side, you can move it wherever you deem necessary.
I like the thought, I like the discussion, I think that's good. All right.
I think on our side, if we leave it as is, but there's possibility of moving it from SCC Capital to the Macon County Schools, that that needs to be conveyed to SCC, because you don't want them jumping in there July one and starting on one of these projects because they think, hey, this money is in the budget.
Yeah, we don't want the roof replaced just because they have the money for it. We want to know that that roof.
But that just needs to be conveyed, and they may be watching our meeting. I don't know if anybody from SCC is in the audience, but we just need to make sure to convey that to them, that there's some possibility that could change, so they don't jump right in, you know, and start a capital project thinking that, you know, the board has funded it.
Well, and I, I agree with that, and we can, we will deliver that message if that's what you want to do, and then especially if the college is going to have to come back in July or no later than August, so that we talk about what these other big projects are that we're going to do. They're going to be here, so we can actually take a look at some of that stuff, and then you can ask questions directly of them while they're here, if you want to do that as well.
We should always have an independent such as Mr. Allen or somebody to look at these projects when we're told that they need to be replaced. Well, we need to know that that's definitely the case.
All right, any further comments on the budget?
So just, can I just clarify before you guys take a vote? At this point, we're leaving the budget as presented with, of course, the changes that Warren mentioned, is that correct? So no change, no moving the money around at the moment, just leaving it the same except for those changes he mentioned, which were at the direction of you guys, okay? Okay.
All right.
You got anything?
I think when it's kind of settled, I have a hard time taking monies from one organization like SCC and putting it somewhere else, uh, without conversing with it. But, but you're right, a lot of times if someone sees that movement going to happen, your knee picks up right then. And, uh, so I don't, I don't know how you go through there and just, uh, because next week you, if I'm going to lose my money and, uh, I, I may have that roof leaking pretty quick.
Just we'll send Joe Allen. We'll send Joe Allen to check.
Shoot up in the roof, Joe, or something there. But I'd like to see the money stay where it's, uh, no change.
So, Mr. Chairman, at this point, budget ordinance A under six would be the ordinance that you have on the table for consideration.
Yes, sir.
Now you can make your motion, John, that you were making earlier, right?
All right.
Well, Mr. Chairman, at this time, um, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the budget ordinance fiscal year 26, uh, section A.
As presented?
As presented.
I hear a motion by Commissioner Sherrill, second by Commissioner Breeden. Any further discussion? Good job for a first time, Mr. Manager.
We're not done yet.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? Please let the record reflect 5-0, Ms. Tammy.
I know where you live, buddy.
All right. All right, additions to the agenda. All right, hearing none, we're going to move into public comment period?
No.
No?
Public hearing on the budget.
Just a public hearing.
We got a public comment.
All right, Richard Litchford.
Good evening and thank you, one and all, for the opportunity to speak. I have two, um, handouts, so I'm going to start them at the opposite ends. As you take one, it is empirical evidence of the comments I'm about to make. I want to urge our commissioners to support the appointment of Kathy Smith to the FRL Regional Board and Bill McGah to the Macon County Library Board. This is an important step in fostering management of our library that reflects conservative Christian values of our community. Their appointment will help Macon County taxpayers regain control of and eliminate FRL wasteful spending of our tax dollars and misrepresentation that I have heard of material financial statistics. This is a great opportunity for Macon County to streamline communication between the two boards and ensure unity of purpose, especially with a project and division of the county that so impacts the future and health of our most cherished resource, our children. I have handed out the goals of the American Communist Party. And I want to call your attention to the fact that these goals were read into the congressional record of the Congress of the United States of America. And I'm not going to read all 45 goals. Aren't you glad for that? But I want to emphasize some that pertain to the management of our library. Goal number 17, get control of our public schools. Goal number 19, use student riots to formate public protests. Goal number 24, eliminate laws governing obscenity. Goal number 25, break down cultural standards or morality by promoting pornography and obscenity in books, which is an issue that is hot on everyone's minds today regarding the management, pardon me, of the library. Present homosexuality as normal, natural, and healthy. Eliminate prayer and any religious expression in our schools.
About 10 more seconds, okay?
Okay. Discredit the family as an institution, emphasize the need to raise children away from the negative influence of parents. Strategies sponsored by the FRL management encourage values that mirror the communist agenda and rules for radicals, which I won't go into, you have a copy of that. In the process, FRL undermines our local culture. I have asked that the Naked Communists, a book authored by retired FBI agent W. Cleon Skozin detailing the history of communism, be made available to borrow. But FRL has ignored my request. In the process, FRL distributes inappropriate literature that threatens the mental health of our most precious resource, our children, as it encourages and undermines parental authority. Thank you.
Sorry to cut you off, but thank you. All right, Diane Catlin.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
My name is Diane Catlin. I'm from Highlands and I am only here to thank you. I have been listening to too many of your wonderful, um, meetings and it seems like there's a lot of negativity. And so I am simply here to say thank you. I'm so glad I got to hear the thing about the fire departments. You are doing a great job and I just want you to know that. And Mr. Cave, I wrote you a note to tell you how welcome you are because you are clearly very good at what you do. So some think you have a thankless job so they never say thank you. The way I was raised, you always said thank you for everything. Others take to social media to take aim and then fire the most horrible list of insults they can configure to string together as if those insults will be a noose around your neck. Others try to destroy your reputation or your business and gleefully spread made-up, fabricated lies firing at you like an agitated bee who lost his stinger on someone else. My neighbors and I, who are here tonight, want to thank you for hanging in there for the county and all of those who appreciate every moment you are giving us with your servant's hearts. I had the most amazing childhood. My father was a humble but sought-after attorney. He was quiet, but when he spoke, he always, we always listened. I never, ever heard him insult anyone. It was his rule. When I was about 10 years old, I found a very old paper annual from his elementary school days. And when I opened it and searching for his picture, I found three young boys pictured among others, but each had some letters from the alphabet by their names scrawled in ink. I rounded Daddy with a book and asked him what those letters meant. Slowly, he moved his pipe to the right, the aroma of mixture 79, I hope that's the number because I can't remember, he's been dead for a million years, but it was all over him. And he lowered his little readers and he examined the photos himself and he started chuckling. He said, those, um, those letters are D S A B A A C. I always write those down when I tell this story because I can't remember them unless I remember what they stood for. So he said, Diane, those are my best friends. We made a club called the Don't Say Anything Bad About Anyone Club. And it was our pact and we were accountable to each other. So I thought about that club for years as I watched Daddy model that commitment to edify never tear down, to always say thank you and to always appreciate people who are working for you. So the problem we have in today's world is some people, especially on social media, I really object to that and I taught against it, um, they think their laptops are there to maim us and they're not. They're dear, they're for communication. Um, they're really good at being mean. It's kind of, um, the bad news about that being mean is it's contagious. And the more you see on social media, and I don't do social media, but the more people send me things that are on social media, I'm disgusted because this is where America has gone? Well, it's not in this county. And I'll tell you that. I noticed tonight your respect for every single person who had to talk and wanted to talk, your respect for those fire people. And I was trying to figure out how we could fund fire trucks, you know, because ourselves in the community. So anyway, um, I want you to know, you have had several years now of hard assignments and I've been listening online. The majority of your constituents do not come to all or any of your meetings. We actually go to bed at dark and we actually work in our retirements. But I want to tell you that there are many of us who are cheering you on and you don't ever hear from us. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Catlin. All right, Betsy Beest.
I'm going to start with, um, an apology that I'm going to have to leave as soon as I'm done talking. I have a meeting, but I will be back. I have, um, three things and maybe four minutes because we've been extending time today? I don't know, just checking. How much time do I have?
We have 45 minute public comment, about six speakers, so I've been pretty kind to everybody.
Okay. So, um, my first one is the river. Um, I took pictures of those trucks still out there doing work after June 1st, so I just want to say that. Make sure that you know that that was happening and I have those pictures. Um, and they really need to restore the damage that they've done at our riverside parks and are, where they put in because they've, they've destroyed it and I have pictures of that too. Um, second, library. You're going to look at two appointments today, um, one for the Macon County Library Board and one for the Fontana Regional Library Board. I sent you emails about this. Historically, that has been a Nantahala position, someone from the Nantahala community to represent those underrepresented people in Nantahala. And so I'm going to ask you to consider that you maintain that precedence that's already been set and nominate someone from, two people, because there's two positions, or one person for both, for, from Nantahala for that position. You've done it in the past. It's been kind of set that we represent the folks over there as well. We don't just forget about them. And then the third one is really bizarre because I didn't do my homework and I didn't read the agenda Friday like I normally do. On the consent agenda, number 13G, approval of the lease space at the auto volunteer fire and rescue. I'm the vice president of the Auto Community Development Association. We've never seen this lease. And so we, I quickly have been texting my board and asking them, did anybody know about this? This is all brand new to us. Um, and so we're going to ask you to please pull this out of the consent agenda, table it for now because we've never seen this document and, and we're named on the document. So, um, please do that because we have no idea what this is all about. The G, approval of lease space? Yeah. Nobody sent us one. The board's never looked at it. Just saying. Please don't vote on it because we don't know what you're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beest.
I'm going to tell you, by the way.
All right, Kim Lester. Hope I pronounced that right. I don't think I did, did I?
Kim Lester or Lester? Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Kim Lester. Um, two months ago, April, I spoke to you about a concern about email that was generated from an email account of a member of the library board. What was proposed there was illegal under the sunshine law and still nothing has been done. Since then, that member has gone to another county to try and undermine the whole FRL agreement along with another member of the library board, Macon County Library Board. Y'all say that you want to stay with FRL. Well, these people that you handpicked are going against your wishes and we have to also wonder, are they going against the wishes of the people who voted you in? Some, yeah, you know, they're all for it. However, when there was a lot of discussion about what was going on in the library and through FRL, um, there were people that complained about certain books. I'm not sure how many of them actually went through the protocols for challenging a book and just wanted to come and speak publicly about it. Um, but I know there were a lot of people that came and spoke in support of our library, our library staff and at the FRL. I'm just asking you to please address the concerns about people that are going against the wishes of you, the board, who have said you support our staying with the FRL and also for the people of Macon County. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. All right, GM Gaston.
Thank y'all for what you're doing. I know you have a difficult job. There's an ideology that's trying to take root in our area. It's a failed ideology that's been tried in other places. It's gone by different names, but it's not true democracy. This ideology wants to use government as a vehicle for biased agendas. This ideology would have everyone shut up and cave to their demands. Those who carry the water readily admit the end justifies the means, even if it involves disinformation and fear mongering. All of us, but especially you as leaders, have an obligation not to let this ide- ideology take root in Macon County. Thankfully, according to recent election results, this ideology is a small minority in western North Carolina, but it's present nonetheless. Its followers view the world as oppressed versus oppressors or want to solve problems by throwing more public money at pet projects instead of using critical thinking and common sense. No doubt, these followers believe they are noble and righteous for their causes. They are full of passion and emotion, but lack knowledge of how destructive this ideology has been elsewhere. They ignore a rule of law, economics, and even basic science. Furthermore, instead of honest discussion that makes our communities thrive, those who follow this ideology hurl insert insults or attempt to shame and punish anyone who speaks against it, never debating of the facts. They yell out uncontrollably at meetings without decorum. They lie. They attack those who do business with you. At times, their tactics might be intimidating, but I encourage you not to be afraid of them. They are a small minority. If you're willing to support such things as limited government, low taxes, private property rights, and genuine free speech where everybody can think for themselves, followers of this ideology have not and will not support you. The vast majority of Maconians realize this ideology is dangerous because it seeks to censor dialogue by attacking the First Amendment. They do not want true democracy because they cannot imagine compromise and enough is never enough with them. They spin the narrative with lies and the media is usually complicit. It is the same absurd mentality that claims library supporters want to ban books or close the library, or that men should compete in women's sports, or that accountability does not apply. It's like arsonists preaching fire safety. I don't know any of you on this board very well, but I believe each one of you want to do what is right and want to support constitutional principles based on the platforms that got you elected. I encourage you to stand firm against this ideology, even when it's difficult or when you are attacked personally. The silent majority stand beside you. I thank each one of you for your willingness to take on the difficult job of managing this wonderful county we call home and keeping it free from this failed ideology. Thank you.
That wraps up public comment. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Chairman, uh, let's see, adjustments. Um, on the consent agenda, I'd like to, uh, 13D approval of hiring relatives to the sheriff, Brent Holbrook. 13E approval of destruction of public records for Macon's solid waste. 13G, which that's part of what Ms. Beest just said, approval of lease for space at auto fighter volunteer fire and rescue. 13K, Macon Middle School. Capital Project Ordinance Amendment. 13L, Capital Project Ordinance Amendment Franklin High School. 13M, Capital Project Ordinance Amendment Highland School Project. 13N, Capital Project Ordinance Amendment Highlands Middle School Renovation. And 13O, Grant Project Ordinance Amendment Housing Administration. I'd like to have a discussion on some of those.
And you would like to move these to new business?
New business.
All right.
All of them are really old business.
Where would you propose?
13D is not. 13D is probably new business.
You want to make that one 12B?
12B. Solid waste would be 12C. Auto Fire Department Agreement.
I was actually going to make the recommendation, if you want to just remove that one. The community club does lease space to the fire department, but that conversation had, I thought that had taken place between the fire department and them. So if you want to remove that one completely, there's no issue if you want to remove that one completely tonight. We can postpone it.
Yeah, we can just remove 13G. 13K, the middle school ordinance. That would be under old business?
Yeah, all of those Capital Project Ordinance Amendments and grants, that's mine, they're all old.
Would be 12 or 11C. Franklin High School would be 11D. Highlands School would be 11E. Highlands Middle School would be 11F. And the housing grant, that's old business, okay, would be 11G.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, were you?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Chairman, we need to remove item 14C as well under appointments. That's the Town of Franklin Planning Board ETJ seats. After some review between Eric and Tammy and myself, I think to meet your priorities, we need to advertise that, correct? Eric, instead of recommendation from the town. So we'll just remove that one completely.
All right. Gentlemen, anybody else? Anything else? John, that's a lot of discussion right there.
Well, it's really just, I want clarification on record of what. So it's not going to take long to.
All right. Now, do you understand we have a call for closed session tonight? Is that correct? Yes, sir. Okay. All right. Any other additions?
I don't have addition, but could I make a change? Item 13I, it says Capital Project Ordinance Amendment, but that shouldn't be, amendment should not be there. That is the initial Capital Project Ordinance for the rec park project.
For the record, let's strike the word amendment.
Strike the word amendment, thank you.
All right, is that it? I need a motion to approve the agenda. I have a motion by Commissioner Antoine, second by Commissioner Shields. Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye. Any opposed? All right, pass this five oh, Ms. Tammy. All right. Reports and presentations. Mr. Russ Harris with the annual opioid meeting. Welcome, Russ.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm pulling that up. My name is Russ Harris, Executive Director for the Southwestern Commission. We are the Council of Governments for the seven western counties. We work primarily in economic development, workforce development. We provide services for older adults through the area agency and agents. So I came in tonight, I put one of our annual reports in front of you all. It's our 60th anniversary, so we're proud of that. And we'll be celebrating, we have an annual dinner July 28th, celebrating our 60th anniversary. You'll all be getting an invitation to that. So every year, you're required as part of the opioid summit funds to hold a public meeting. The county manager asked me to come tonight to just present on this. Couple of years ago, we were asked by local governments just to support a planning effort around what they could do with the funds. And so we became familiar with the process through that time. And so just I'm going to give a brief update tonight. So the first slide has the funds for Macon County. You're getting about $5.6 million. That's over an 18-year period. And as you can see with the graph, it tells you what the draws are per year. It's front-loaded so that you're able to get projects started, and then it tapers off over time. This is a county-level choice. No money gets spent of your opioid settlement funding without a vote from this board. So I'll just talk a little bit about process tonight and just give a little bit of a review of the planning process that was done. So we hired a consultant, worked with them for about a year and a half, worked with stakeholders from all seven counties. Three priorities that came up at the regional level, the recovery support services, post overdose response team, and the oxalone distribution. Again, these are just things that came out of surveys, focus groups, things like that. And then stakeholders from the counties kind of decide what the priorities were. This has no binding effect on Macon County. Some of the top survey points coming out of Macon County, things that were needed, connections to care and more treatment options. And some of the highlights from open ended responses were that there was an existing kind of peer support network and also a pretty robust ecosystem for helping people that were struggling with these issues. Out of the focus groups and interviews, support for more education around harm reduction strategies, something that was stated as needed. More transportation, a lot of the treatment options are not in the region. So a lot of it is about transportation costs. And then also for people that have been through treatment, some kind of safe housing for them to come back to so they're not going right back into the situation they were in previously. So there's two sets of strategies that the state put in the MOU that they have with the counties. You've got option A and you've got option B. Option A are the 12 strategies you see in front of you. These are proven strategies that work to help with substance use disorder. And if you choose any of these strategies, if you voted on them as a board, you're pretty much good to go tomorrow with those strategies. The other option is option B, which is a little more of a heavy lift. You've got to go back through a planning process. You've got to do more reporting. So the overwhelming majority of counties have chosen option A, and the state has heavily kind of recommended, especially for old counties where there's less resources, they choose option A just so they're able to put the money on the street quicker and start helping people. And I won't read through those, but you've got them in front of you there, and you've got to copy these slides. And this just goes through kind of the process of some of the things that are available for option B. So your process requirements as a county, you've got to put the funds in a separate account, which has already been done. You've got about three years of funds, I believe, right now. Those have been put in their own separate account. Number three actually would come before number two, which is choosing option A or option B. And then number two would actually be the next thing, which would be authorized spending. So you as a board decide what you want to do, and then you vote on that. You're good to go. You've got to send a form to the state, but you've got 90 days to do that after you vote. The great thing about these funds, too, most times you get a grant, you're locked into what you said you would do on the front end. If you choose to do something and you get a year down the road and you don't think it's working, you can change course. And you can do that kind of all the way through this process. So you've got a lot of flexibility there. And then the last thing is, or the last two things, understand and follow the reporting requirements, and I've got those in a second. And then hold your annual meeting, which you're doing this evening. So once you vote on what you want to do with those funds, you have to turn in a local spending authorization report within 90 days of that vote. And then you've got reports that need to be done. You've got to do a financial report every year within 90 days of the end of the fiscal year. The impact report you only have to do if you chose to spend money during that year. So any questions around the opioid funding? And as far as where you are right now as a county, talking to county manager, I believe, just looking at a more local planning process going forward, looking at some funding to support that, is kind of where you all are at the moment. And I don't know, Warren, if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I had actually approached Russ, and I reached back out to the Dogwood Health Foundation. They actually opened up an application for us for some grant funding that we can contract with a person or an agency to go through a lot of this reporting requirements that's pretty significant that you have to go through in order to adequately spend these funds. And then it helps with the financial tracking of it. It helps through that whole process. It takes the load off of us. And I know there's at least one county that they got a little bit ahead of themselves and had to repay some funds because they didn't step through some of these processes. Those funds would be separate from what the opioid funds are. You're not pulling money out of that fund to pay somebody to manage it. This is a separate fund from the Dogwood folks that would do that. So we're going to meet with his staff. We're going to meet here this week or next week to go through that process to see how that would look. And then we can kind of tighten this up and then get the bases together for you all and then come back to you and say, okay, we've got the process in place. What do you want to do with the money? And how do you want to distribute your money? So that's kind of where we're at at the moment is getting our feet on the ground with that, for lack of a better term, I guess, Russ.
And I think that's been a strategy that's worked well, at least in one other county where they use that funding to kind of hire a coordinator to kind of champion that process, bring in local stakeholders, hear what's important within their county. And then they've just announced their first round of kind of grants out to providers within the community to start providing those services. So that's proven to be a pretty good strategy.
What's the timeframe on the funding?
Overall, or just that Dogwood funding?
I mean, like, where's the money? And how much have we gotten or when are we due? Generically speaking.
I'm going to look to Lori on that.
Yes, so we, yeah. Sorry. Opioid settlement come from the various sources just randomly through the year. We have currently, bear with me. Let's see.
I can't do math like Warren in front of people, so I'm not going to try to add that together.
Better double check it.
Let's see. Looks like $1,789,541.51 year to date.
And if we choose to go the route of the Dogwood folks, if we look at that application and that works out for us that we want to apply for that funding, go through that process, I think it's right around $200,000 over a.
$300,000.
$300,000, I'm sorry, but it's over two years, I believe.
And they'll give you extensions on that as well.
And again, that's not so that they tell you how to spend the money. It's to set up the basis for you so that you can spend the money somewhere.
It's incredibly low. They give you a lot of freedom to choose that process.
Thank you, Russ. That's real money.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming over. All right. Moving on, old business. Scheduled joint meeting with the Macon County Board of Health. Mr. Cabe.
Mr. Chairman, I did speak with Kathy, who spoke with Jerry Hermanson, who's the chairman of the health board, per our discussion at the last work session we had. And they're willing to have a joint meeting with you at your regrow meeting on July 8th, if the board wants to do that. One of the things that we actually discussed today was perhaps you may want to alter your agenda a little. You may want to schedule that meeting the first thing on your agenda and go ahead and meet with them. And then that way, we're not waiting till nine o'clock or so to meet with those folks, depending on what the discretion of the board is.
I don't have a problem with that at all. You're saying kind of after public comment?
Any, yes.
Okay. All right. I mean, I don't think we need any, we don't need any action for that, do we?
And when's that going to be, in July? I mean, yeah, July.
July the 8th.
I think we're happy with consensus if that's okay with the board, and we'll.
Is everybody okay with that? Mr. Sherrill, Commissioner Shields?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Antoine, Mr. Breeden, okay?
And I'll pass that information along to Kathy that she can pass along to Mr. Hermanson.
All right, that was easy. How about an update on the community funding pool?
Well, Mr. Chairman, one of the things that I've been trying to do is to get you enough members to staff that community funding pool. It does say that it shall have 13 members based on the bylaws that the previous board has adopted. We can almost get there. I'll just be honest with you, we had 13 applications exactly this time. However, two of those were county employees. Traditionally, we only have one county employee that's been on there previously. And it concerns me a little that if I bring you the exact number of applications that you have for a position, you don't, you can't make much of a choice. And then if you don't pick one of those folks, then you basically can't have the committee because of the way the rules are in your bylaws. You shall have that many folks. Chester Jones taught me a long time ago when it says shall, you shall have that many folks. So I guess something, I'm looking for discussion from the board. One of the things you may want to consider if you want to keep going that route, you can actually change the number of members on that committee based on the bylaws because they work at your discretion. If you wanted to go to nine or seven or some number there, we might stand a better chance if you want to keep pursuing this route to, for me to give you an adequate number of folks to select from. I actually did not bring the application to you tonight because I didn't think it was fair to you. If you did decide to change that number tonight, you wouldn't know whether to look for seven or nine or 12, or you didn't know what those numbers were. So I guess I'm just looking for some direction from you all, how you want me to proceed with that, knowing that I'm still struggling to give you an adequate number of choices to staff that committee.
So you wouldn't want to motion tonight to go with a certain number?
That's, if that's the will of the board, yes, I'm okay with that. It's whatever your thoughts are.
Chairman, if I may, I want everybody to know that I'm not against these organizations and nonprofits of Macon County just because I don't want to give them taxpayers money. I don't think it is the role of the government to extract monies from the taxpayers and give it to NGOs. NGOs is a non-government organization. The government is to collect enough money to run an effective and efficient government. When the government gives taxpayers monies to NGOs, this action is also known as socialism. It is not a matter of the $75,000. It is solely the principle of the action. It is irresponsible of the elected body and our government to continue to pay into NGOs. These folks, you know, I know a lot of people use these organizations, and they do great work. But in my opinion, it's not the government's responsibility, nor should they have the right to tax, extract taxpayers' monies and give it to non-government organizations. That's where I stand on this community funding pool. And so we've forgotten as NGOs how to go out and raise money and be part of the community when we can just ask the government for it.
And I will remind the board, you do have the money in this fiscal year budget. We're not, we're not going to spend it by the end of June, obviously. So if that, if you want to continue using that money next year, we would have to do a budget amendment in June and roll that money forward, depending on how you want to proceed with that, depending on what your intent is to do with those funds.
Anybody else?
Yes, I'd like to just make a couple of comments. I feel like the non-public or the non-government or your organizations that have to ask for grants and stuff like that, having been with some of those organizations when they've written the grants, it is really an opportunity for that organization to restart. They can look at themselves and look at the goals and objectives and their job message or duties are. It allows them to, through a grant writing, to look really where they're going. If you don't use that procedure, you'll kind of wander around out here. So, and I don't want to use an organization to bring one out. So, and I don't want to use an organization to bring one out because today we were looking at a grant for a, something's going to be cut out of another organization, HOP, HOPS, Healthy Opportunities. And if that piece goes out, Healthy Opportunities, we are going to be in a situation where we're going to have to react to what that now is not going to cover. And by doing that, is, say again, it allows us to do a grant, go back and look at yourself to see if you're reaching your goals and stuff. If you don't have to do that, I'm telling you, just get out here and wander around. And through the school system, we've worked with grants, MPP worked with grants. So they're, they are an important part of the government contribution. But then again, what we have to look at, one organization that I'm with, if we didn't have that piece, the mental health piece within our organizations, it would cost the county over three hundred thousand dollars to take that organization over. And that's, so if the grants, whether it's through school or whatever it may be, allow you to review where you're going. And to me, that's important and for the, to the government or whatever it may be, to participate in this. In this situation, the government is this organization right here. So if you're looking at ten thousand dollars or seventy-five thousand dollars, but one organization, if they are not funded or they don't get the grants, they can end up costing this county way more than ten thousand dollars. And we all live off grants and those, those things are important. And I just need to say that, that there's a, there's a reason to have grants out here. There's a reason for your nonprofits to request those. And we do it all over the place for grants and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shields. Anybody else? Anybody? I, John and I spoke about this on the phone, and this is a tough one for me because, you know, I've done a little bit of research, been up here a few times. And, you know, some of the return on that small investment we make pays substantial dividends. And I feel like I'm just not qualified to know all the ins and outs. But one particular instance I think Commissioner Shields is referring to, they handle a lot of the rape kits and a lot of the SA victims and a lot of the stuff that right now the county is able to send off. And, you know, right now, I'm just kind of wanting to, the funds are already balanced, the funds are already allocated this year. We've already more or less committed those funds this year. And I think I'd like to take a deeper dive into it next year, Commissioner Sherrill. But I also would be interested in making a motion to cutting that committee down to five members. I feel like I've sat on boards with ten and twelve members and it's very, very, very ineffective. I think you put five people that are actively engaged, I think that's enough. So that's really where I'm at. And when you go with your gut, and that's what I feel is right at this point in time. The money was committed to them. It'd be hard for me to take it back at this point in time and moving forward. Commissioner Sherrill, I think we can have this conversation.
Well, I don't think, based on what the manager was talking about, the seventy-five thousand dollars that was budgeted in the twenty-five, or the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, there are no board members there to award those monies.
That's correct.
Correct.
That is correct.
So that seventy-five thousand dollars will roll into next year for funding. And so at that point, when we're talking about, so in other words, that seventy-five thousand dollars is not going to be awarded to anyone by June thirtieth of twenty-five.
Yeah, but it can be two weeks into July. I mean, what is, what's, I mean, to me, it's, we're talking weeks.
We can have his vote in July, wasn't it?
I mean, you see what I'm saying? I feel like, you know, it's...
Well, I was confused with that anyways because we budgeted the money, but yet it was June of the, the end of the budget cycle before that money was awarded.
That's right. And it's got to do with our fiscal year, you know, budgeting process right here.
Yeah, I will say Lori and I looked at that, and that's always a challenge when that money's paid out in June anyway, because there's some reporting requirements those folks have to do to get back to us. And it's a chore to get that money done in June, to get the checks cut out to those folks and any kind of reporting requirement. So fiscally for us, it would work better for that to occur way earlier in the year anyway, if that happens. And in the beginning of the year, I mean, from July one on.
I mean, I agree. I mean, that money was budgeted in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget for seventy-five thousand dollars. It was approved by this body and, and these agencies are, are expecting those funds. Moving forward, we need to have a deeper discussion whether we continue to do this.
I'll agree with that.
So if we can get a, if we can get a board together with changing the thirteen members to a smaller board and figure out who's going to be awarded this money, by all means.
I'll also add, one of the things I looked at, I looked at the requirements on what you want that board to do. It's pretty specific that it's just for the community funding pool, but if you want to take a look into that, you may want to look at the duties you assign those folks because we talk about monies a lot for other agencies. There may be other duties you want to assign to those folks. So that's a good project to look at moving forward in July, if you get that group established again.
I think the, going down from thirteen to nine or seven or five, I think, I think is a good thing to do because I think the fewer people you have, sometimes the more quality that comes out of it. The larger the group, sometime it gets a little fragile. But the, there are some people out there that are willing to be on this nonprofit group and to assist in the leadership of it and follow your directions. I guess I have a little reservation about having an accounting employee involved in this. So I think the, whatever number we come up with, nine, seven, or five, although it's an odd number, that we should make sure that the people there are, are looking at the total picture of an organization and not just something that they're, got a little bit of touch with.
The only thing I would say is, I agree that these are not, I mean, it's a fifty-fifty issue. There's good things about it, and then there's obviously things that we don't, you know, it's not our responsibility to fund those nonprofits. But if we're going to continue funding the nonprofits, I think that we should be the people that make the decision on who gets the money. I don't know that we need a committee out there that says, hey, give these people the money, these organizations the money, and then us just rubber stamp that and say, okay. Why aren't we the ones that, I mean, we were elected to be here. If, if they submit an application for funding, it should come to us. We should review them and we should have a discussion on who we're approving and who we're not. It's just my...
I respect what you're saying, but when Gary Shields is a member of one of those, he's already biased about who, they've already got a vote, a nonprofit is, if I'm working with that group, being in there. So I'd have to, in fairness, I'd have to X myself out. I don't know how to vote on that because I know which way I'd vote. And, and I don't think that's...
I think it's just up for further discussion. If we're going to keep blending it, I just, you know, I feel like that's important for us to have the oversight on where the money's going.
I will say that when you're dealing with a child that's hungry or a child that's been raped, it's easy as a parent to let your emotions take over and feel sorry for that child and everything else and just automatically want to go in there and do everything you can for that. But unfortunately, as being a leader, you have to base all your decisions as leadership. You cannot let the emotions overtake how you vote on something. And, and so I've been to a lot of these organizations and the work they do and the love that they have for families and kids and everything else. It's hard to say no, but sometimes you have to, you have to own up that you were elected to do what's right for the taxpayers of this county. And you have to make hard decisions. And if we could, you know, one of these organizations, there's a lady in the community, she has an event coming up in the fall. There's no telling how much money she's going to raise for this organization. That's what we need. We need more people like this person to go in there and raise money for these nonprofits and stop looking at the government to bail out everybody every step of the way because we have forgotten. It's easy for us to come up here and see this board, just stick your hand out, give it to me, give it to me. Oh, well, if you don't, you're against me. No, I'm not against you. But as a, as the people, we've forgotten how to do that. Some of these organizations, it would blow people away if they would just go in and see what these groups are doing. And they probably have money coming out their ears. But it's sort of, it's, it's not community involvement anymore. It's grants, it's handouts. And folks, I'm sorry, but these grants is what's got this country into thirty-seven trillion dollar national debt. And, and so that grant money is taxpayers' money. It's not free money. So as we take those grants, we are guilty for that thirty-seven trillion dollar national debt. It's going to sink this ship. And when it goes down, we're all going down with it. That's all I got to say.
All right. I feel like we're all over the place on this. How do we, how do we kind of focus back in towards the center? I'm happy to make a motion to cut this thing down to five, seven members. Commissioner Shields? Commissioner Breeden, do you want the five members to be us? Do you want us to have a liaison to it?
At, at least a liaison. I mean, I think I would like to see this board make those decisions. We make the decision on who's the library, who's the DSS, who's this, you know, so...
I feel like ultimately what's happened in the past is they send us a recommendation. I think we kind of rubber stamped that. I feel like we could change that if we had heartburn with it, but...
At least a liaison, yeah. That, you know, someone that is there to represent this board and how those funds are going to be allocated.
Okay. All right. So can we all agree on that so far?
Fine.
All right. You want five members or seven members?
I'm good with, I think five.
Five members here?
I see. I think the quality part is what's important. At five, you can get a little weak. I'd go for the seven. I think there's, in some of these organizations, you can come up with the seven qualities.
Can we do a seven-member board, but also put in that, that there would, it would need to have a quorum? So all seven members? Because I think that was one thing with planning board, you had eleven members and everybody had to be there, or it wasn't a meeting. So I think we need to take that into consideration.
So, so looking at the articles of your bylaws, a majority of the members of the committee, then an office shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of any authorized business. So I think you're covered under the quorum based on the rules that you have.
With a seven, seven members?
Yes. And if you want a liaison, then, then you would need to obviously name a liaison because that's not necessarily in the rules that you've already used before.
Fair enough. We'll discuss a non-voting liaison. And I need a motion to change bylaws to community funding pool for seven, to seven members.
So move.
I hear a motion by Commissioner Antoine, second by Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, please let the record reflect five oh, Ms. Tammy. All right, moving on, new business. Discussion and update on cleanup of private property located seventy-seventeen Georgia Road. Mr. Joe Allen?
We've met you. We've got this.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. You're right, Commissioner Sherrill.
This shouldn't take too long. I just want clarification on...
Joe, give us just, I'm sorry, we had a, we had a...
It'll be fine.
All right. All right, old business. Eleven C, Capital Project Ordinance. Commissioner John Sherrill.
That was the Capital Project Ordinance Amendment, Macon Middle School renovation, correct?
Yeah, that's new business. Yes.
Macon Middle School.
Macon Middle School. I would just want clarification on this as to what this ten million, is that, that's from the repairs and renovations and additions that was completed?
Correct. And the reason it's coming before you now is, if you'll remember, the school board came before y'all several months, maybe a few months into the fiscal year, and asked for a change order on the track. So whenever we added the track as part of the Macon Middle School project, it became a line item within that budget. And so since you gave them additional money in this current fiscal year for a change order for said track, then by statute, I have to amend the Capital Project Ordinance for that project to incorporate that track, the change in the track price. So that's all that is.
All right. Eleven D, Franklin High School.
Franklin High School shows that we had a guaranteed maximum price of a hundred and thirty-eight million, whatever the numbers are. And now in this, we're at a hundred and forty million.
Okay. The GMP was actually one hundred twenty-three million, four hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars. The GMP only covers construction. So above and beyond construction, we had to budget funds for furniture, equipment, architect fees, professional fees such as geotech exploration, special inspections, et cetera. And then there were issuance costs related to the debt. And the main reason, I believe the only reason this is coming before you, if I'm remembering correctly, was, was it last meeting, we had to appropriate like eleven thousand, seven fifty, somewhere along that number?
For survey.
For the survey related to, what's that road name?
Porter Street.
Porter Street.
And that money will be reimbursable through DOT when we get...
So that's really the, the major, well, the, that's the change. But also, again, we really ramped up the project in current budget. You know, we got the debt approved in September, so we had to appropriate all the funds for the project. So that's what this amendment is basically just putting on the, in the Capital Project Ordinance, everything that has occurred. And then the only new add really, since the initial project, would be that eleven thousand, seven fifty. And then, of course, like I said, you know, you remember LS three P came again towards the beginning of the fiscal year after the debt was approved and needed more fees, et cetera. So that's all this ordinance does. It just captures everything that you, as a board and any previous boards, may have appropriated funds for Franklin High. So we're still within the GMP. That has not changed. So...
All right. The...
Eleven E, Highland School Project.
Highland School Project?
Yes.
Are we still that eight million? Is that, that's what we budgeted for that project?
Yes, sir. That has not changed. Again, we ramped this one up about the same time that Franklin High started ramping up. So this just incorporates all of the previous boards, you know, appropriations, as well as current boards appropriations. And this, even though it's called Highland School Project, this is the one that kind of started out as Highland's pre-K, which of course, we know it's much more than a pre-K. It's also addition to the, the middle school, et cetera. So that's all that's doing is capturing everything that's happened previously.
Then the, what was the next?
The Highland's Middle School should be the next one.
The Highland's Middle School. Those were, those are renovations and repairs to the middle school?
Yes.
Tower, windows, doors and stuff?
HVAC, yes.
And we received a grant.
We've got some repair and renovation funds that's covering that. And again, that's just capturing, those two projects, the Highland's, Highland School and Highland's Middle School, you know, kind of at first started out separate and that's how we'd appropriated the budget ordinances, so I haven't merged them together. But yeah, again, that's just appropriating the funds that have been approved by boards previous and current.
Okay. And the Housing Administration, I'm not...
You're not familiar with it?
No, I'm not familiar with it.
So our housing department is, the majority is funded by grants. They're set up as a multi-year fund within our financial software. So the housing admin is every year, we have to appropriate funds for the director and one admin person because they are not fully funded by grants. The admin person is partially funded by... The admin person is partially funded by grants. Um, so this, again, is, since it's a multi-year project, every, like, current year, we budgeted the 148,764. So this, uh, is just an amendment to what was already on the books, and we have that 148,764 added, which now gets us up to this new number.
All right. That's all I got?
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I think if you want to, I think we could approve all of those at one time since we've moved those out, correct? Or we could just do one approval on all of those amendments? Or do we want to leave those under consent and just approve the consent agenda?
I'm good with it. I mean, I just wanted clarification on it, so, just for a discussion.
Do one motion, do all of them?
I think do one motion.
But let's, let's do one motion and approve all of those budget amendments that were pulled out that we just discussed, if that's the will of the board.
Let's, let's do the Commissioner Sherrill under old business items 11C through G.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we approve the items that were pulled out of the consent agenda.
All right. Hear a motion by Commissioner Sherrill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Breeden. All in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Ms. Tammy, 5-0. All right, now moving on to new business. Mr. Joe Allen and, uh, the property we're referring to is the Old Tyler's in Alto.
Okay. Uh, just a quick recap of where we're at on this, uh, Old Tyler's gas station. February 19th, Jimmy Tean, Chaz Al, myself visited the site in response to a complaint about raw sewage and debris, uh, and a dilapidated building. While on site, we did confirm that, uh, there was raw sewage being discharged onto the ground. Uh, and County Environmental Health did issue a notice of violation. Uh, we also saw the dilapidated building, piles of junk debris, untagged vehicles, inoperable vehicles and campers, uh, some electrical code violations. Uh, following that visit, uh, County Attorney did write the property owner a letter, uh, giving her 30 days to mediate those hazards. Uh, that was on February 20th. Uh, on March 24th, Jimmy Tean, Chaz Al, myself went back to the site. Uh, not much progress, if any, had been made at that point. Uh, and then, jump forward a couple of months, in May, uh, our county attorney filed a consent judgment that the property owner did sign, uh, stating that she had till May 15th to remedy the septic issues and the 31st to remove all debris, untagged, inoperable vehicles, campers, RVs. Uh, as of yesterday, June 16th, June 9th, uh, septic system has been installed. We do have a new septic system there. None of the buildings are currently hooked to the septic system, though. So we're still right where we're at, right there, pretty much. Uh, there's been, if you've drove by there, there's quite a bit of the debris has been removed, but we still have some debris there. We still have some untagged vehicles there. Um, one of the septic systems, there's four septic systems on the site. All four had to be abandoned for this new one to be installed. They were failing. Uh, three of them have been abandoned, one of them has not been abandoned yet. So we're still holding out that one. Uh, power to everything except for that house has been removed. The house-to-house power, but of course, none of that electrical stuff's been fixed. Only those other things is either, but there's no power on it, so there's no real danger on it. So, long story short, I think we're gonna discuss this a little bit later, but, uh, there has been some progress made, but there's still some imminent hazards there. We still have the potential of raw sewage going on the ground because the house is being lived in with no septic system right now.
Oh, boy.
Well, no, not cooked, not hooked to the septic system. It has a septic system, it's just not hooked to it.
High-dollar septic system. Is that a panel block system they put in? Oh, they pumped it in?
They were actually, they were actually able to use the old drain fill. They had to move the pump, set two new tanks. Uh, they got that done. They just have not tied anything back into it yet. It's been open for about two weeks.
Who, who's doing this rehooking and stuff like that? I know you're inspecting it, but who's doing the work?
So the septic system was done by Perez Construction. Anybody remember what it is? It's Roberto Perez. He's a licensed septic installer.
Okay.
The plumber who was gonna connect it to the tank from the house to the tank was actually Cochran Plumbing. That's who we have on the permit application anyway. It's Cochran Plumbing.
Do they, do they have a deadline on, again, another deadline?
I think that's, we'll be probably discussing that a little bit later.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I went by today and, um, there were three containers out there in the parking lot, and I told, uh, the attorney that, um, looks like they've made progress unless they've put stuff behind that building back there. And that was, I didn't pull into the property, but, um...
There is. There's some of it's gone. And I will say this, part of Eric's consent judgment was for us to receive the tip and fees receipts from where they took this. I haven't got one since March 21st. I've only got three. So I don't know where it's going.
Really?
Some of this, uh, I mean, we've got some junk vehicles that have been moved behind there where nobody can see them. We've got some debris that's been pushed behind there. There's some of it's been removed, but some of it's just been moved around back.
All right. Well, we'll talk about this in a few minutes.
You know, the other thing is, is when, in '22, when we helped that family clean that place up originally, it stayed pretty nice for about nine months. She asked me to stay in touch with her, and, uh, so I did, and I, and I told her that there was an old camper come, showed up in the parking lot. And there was some junk cars, and said, "Well, I rented this building to, uh, a mechanic." And, um, and then it went downhill from there. Then she, we stopped, she stopped even communicating with me, and, um, it's, what a, what a nice little...
All right. Thank you, Joe. All right. Item 12B, approval for the hiring of relatives of the sheriff. John Sherrill.
Uh-oh. Is that me again? Where's Sheriff at? This was all news to me about this, this process, but, which a lot of stuff is, but just got a few questions.
Yes, sir.
The positions that we're talking about, were they advertised?
Absolutely.
They were?
They're constantly advertised. We never take them down since they're such a revolving door. That's on the county website. It's constantly revolving door in the detention center.
Were there multiple applications?
There, there was, but we have to vet those.
Okay.
And not all of them are qualified, i.e. one of the gentlemen we interviewed, he did LSD two weeks before the interview. I don't think we're gonna hire him.
Okay. Well, I guess my question to that is, um...
Literally. Let's, let's go there.
What made family members more qualified than other applicants? Um, and how you're vetting these people, um, because, look, I certainly know these officers, and I think the world of them, but the, um...
If we have a lot of folks applying, you ain't gonna have nobody apply for $17 an hour in jail, where they're getting assaulted almost every day and spit on them.
Right.
When cookouts pay more than that. I mean, you're just not gonna have it.
Well, I mean, that was the only real question, was what made them more qualified than some of the other applicants?
The fact that they, they do apply.
Was there, I guess, what the general public's looking at, was there favor because it was a family member over the other?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
But I think one, I think one thing that's important, this person you hired has prior law enforcement?
Well, there's two, actually.
Okay.
My niece, both are not blood, and I was always under the impression it had to be blood, um, not by marriage. Both of them are by marriage. Uh, one is a niece in the detention center, and then the other is, um...
He retired from the police department.
Retired from the Frank, Franklin Police Department, and he's certified.
Yeah.
30 years' experience. I mean, you can't beat that.
Oh, yeah.
Shake his hand.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so they were paid at the entry level, um, of these positions?
Yes, the one at detention center, absolutely. 17, 12 an hour.
And then the other one was?
I think he got a, a small bump, if any. To be honest with you, I, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head.
Well...
Um, I, I do know when we do hire someone with experience, we do, we do give them more, and I, but I can't tell you. I brought the cuff.
Um, yeah, I mean, it just, you know, perception is, um...
Absolutely.
Yeah. And so it's...
Oh, yeah, social media, I'm sure that's where you're getting all your stuff from. Social media has blown up.
No, I don't do social media, because, but no, I mean, it's just questions of the, you know, like I said, I didn't know this was an item, um, about the sheriff coming to the Board of Commissioners to hire anybody. I thought, yeah, so...
And, and I apologize, I dropped the ball on that.
And so...
But if we had a lot of people, you know...
I just, I, I, I just wanted it cleared up that there was fairness throughout all applicants and...
Hundred percent. And, and just, just to also give you insight, so when there's a promotion or, or even hiring, there's a panel with, at the sheriff's office, of five. I'm not even on that panel. So the good old boy system, it, it don't exist, because I'm not even on it. Plus, we have one from the Franklin Police Department sit out, that sits in on these interviews as well. I mean, I do have a nephew who was grandfathered in, that was hired under Robbie. He applied for a K-9 position. He didn't get it. I, I, I mean, if nepotism and the good old boy system was a thing, he would've got it, right? But he didn't get it.
I'm good.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just saying, yeah.
Do, do we have to make a motion or anything on the D?
I guess so, to approve, to approve the two. Yes, sir. Somebody, yeah, somebody, I wanna sue...
I see. Barry or you or Mr. Antoine with the police?
So it's just a motion to approve the two positions, right?
Uh, the, the two family members.
You want it to be at the same time like we did last?
Well, I, I feel like it'd be just fine as long as we're gonna approve the other.
All right. Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve, uh, the hiring, 12B, the hiring of the relatives of Sheriff Brent Holbrooks.
Hear a motion by Commissioner Breeden, second by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion?
I would specifically name which employees were the two that were, I would amend the motion, the two.
I'd like to amend that motion to name Kaylee Jenkins as a detention officer and Tracy Chastain as an SRO.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your right arm and stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Also, just so you know...
5-0, Tammy.
Thank you.
Chastain is this part time. In the event of SRO has a doctor's appointment or vacation, he feels that.
You're lucky to have.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Sheriff. All right. 12C, approval of destruction of public records for Macon County solid waste. John Sherrill.
Uh, Chairman, I just wanted clarification on these, um, the public records, exactly what, um, they're proposing to destroy.
So if you saw the handout that was in your packet, these are the, um, tickets from disposal fees when they come through, and they've met their, um, retention guidelines, and so those are paper tickets, and they need the space, so they go through those frequently. And if they've met the, um, retention guidelines, then those are, uh, sent for disposal.
So they're just where weigh-in tickets, where people charge or pay for?
Correct. Correct.
All right. Need a motion to approve?
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the records, request disposal of records from the Macon County.
All right. Hear a motion by Commissioner Sherrill, second by Commissioner Shields. Further discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm and stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Ms. Tammy, uh, 5-0.
Thank you.
All right, that should wrap up the consent agenda. Are you moving on?
We actually need to approve the rest of the, just a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
All right.
Make a motion that we approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Hear a motion by Commissioner Breeden, second by Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. 5-0, Ms. Tammy, and that wraps up the consent agenda. Moving on to appointments, um, we have one seat open at Southwestern Community College Board of Trustees. And I hope we have some paper ballots. Is there a ballot?
So we have, uh, two applicants, Casper Mork, did I say that right? Jeff Clor?
Okay.
Can we, uh, just, just say it before?
I'm sure you can. It's open. It's open for discussion.
Well, I grew up with Mr. Clor. We went to school together and everything else. And reading his application, he is finishing up his third four-year term. Someone that really wants, uh, term limits, uh, even though this is a, uh, it seems like new vision, new eyes and everything else. So that was just the only thing, is we don't have anything, um, any time limits for any of these boards for people to serve. So that's just something we might think about. I'm gonna take my hat off, so I'm not seeing who you voted for. Oh, Josh, huh? I had to do it right here.
Okay. On the, um, ballot for SEC Board of Trustees, we have Chairman Young, Jeff Clor.
I'm lying about that.
Mr. Shields. We have Jeff Clor. John Sherrill. We have Jeff Clor. Danny Anton. We have Jeff Clor. And Barry Breeden. We have Jeff Clor. So I've got five.
All right. Sounds like Jeff Clor, uh, received the seat. Mr. Cave, can you help me on the Agriculture Advisory Board? We had some light discussion about that earlier.
Yeah, Eric and Tammy may have to help me with this one, but basically, the suggestion here is that, that's an advisory board that's basically the same as the Soil and Water Conservation Board. So I think for this particular case, rather than creating a new board and having new folks, you're essentially assigning the duties of the Agriculture Advisory Board to the Soil and Water Conservation Board, which is made up of three elected folks and two, two folks that are appointed by the state. So we felt like, based on the volume that they were gonna do and the, the things they were looking at, it was, it was some duties that could be shared by one group. Is that a, is that a fair statement, Eric?
Yes, that's the way I understand it. I'm not real involved in that, but it sounded like that was an easy fix.
But, but really, you need to, you need to approve those folks as the Agricultural Advisory Board, and you're essentially assigning them to the different...
Would it be appropriate to read their names into the record book?
Yes. Do we have, do we have other names for us?
All right. And, uh, Commissioners, does anybody have any?
Would it be appropriate? I don't have them read.
We, we have them, yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have an issue with, with the advisory board?
So your members are Melinda James, Pam Bell, Mike Breedlove, Matt Reynolds, and Josh Ward. I'll make a motion to make those folks the Agriculture Advisory Board would be appropriate.
All right.
I'll make a motion that those names you just mentioned, if you want to repeat them again, be Agriculture Advisory Board, be the members of the Agriculture Advisory Board.
Melinda James, who's actually the chairman of your Soil and Water Conservation Board, Pam Bell, Mike Breedlove, Matt Reynolds, and Josh Ward.
I'll make that into a motion.
Hear a motion by Commissioner Shields, second by Commissioner Breeden. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right arm and say aye for the record. Aye. Any opposed? All right, five oh, Ms. Tammy. All right. Department of Social Services, we have one seat open. I believe we have three applicants.
Right, so we, the three applicants are Hillary Shockley, Julie Adams, and Lisa Leatherman.
While he's passing these out.
Thank you.
I think I had more heartache over picking these three members right here than I did the Colossi Fire Department. It's just, this board is so thankless and this service is so needed and I wish we could accept them all. I mean, they're wonderful people and, and I know them all three personally and this is kind of a hard decision. I want to thank them for their applications.
Right, surprise. You can rate it, so.
Hey, I've got Commissioner Breeden as Julie Adams. Got Danny Anton as Julie Adams. Got Josh Young as Julie Adams. Got Mr. Shields as Lisa Leatherman. And I've got John Scherl as Julie Adams. So it looks like we have four to one. Guess we need to approve that.
All right, need a motion to approve? Hear a motion by Commissioner Breeden, second by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, Ms. Tammy, five oh. All right, uh, Macon County Library Board.
Okay, this one is the Macon County Library Board, um, which will be followed by the Fontana Regional Library Board. The Macon County Library Board, the applicants are Bonnie Bell, Melissa Schreiber, Natalie Grant, Robert Perkins, and Mr. William Bill McGah.
And Mr. McGah, uh, does serve on the Fontana Regional Library Board.
Okay, for the Macon County Library Board, we have, uh, Mr. Shields as Natalie Grant. Mr. Breeden is William McGah. Commissioner Antoine is Mr. McGah. Commissioner Young is Mr. McGah. And John Scherl is William McGah. So that's, uh, four to one on Macon County Library Board with Mr. McGah.
Any motion to approve?
A move.
I have a motion by Commissioner Breeden, second by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye. Aye. Any opposed? Please let the record reflect five oh, Ms. Tammy. All right, Fontana Regional Library Board, one seat.
Fontana Regional Library Board, the two applicants are Heather Dombrosky and Kathy Smith. On Mr. Breeden, we, uh, Commissioner Breeden has voted for Kathy Smith. Commissioner Antoine is for Kathy Smith. Commissioner Young is for Kathy Smith. Commissioner Shields is Kathy Smith. And Commissioner Scherl is Kathy Smith. We've got five.
All right, I need a motion to approve?
A move.
Hear a motion by Commissioner Breeden, second by Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye. Aye. Any opposed? Please let the record reflect five oh, Ms. Tammy. Thank you. All right, I understand we do have a closed session. Mr. Attorney, can you, uh, give us the general statute?
Yes, that's, um, one forty-three dash. Where y'all going to say it? One forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A three.
I need a motion to go into closed session.
Attorney, um, about pending litigation.
Hear a motion by Commissioner Breeden.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye.
Aye.
All right, five oh.
I've got the email.
Not necessary.
Not necessary this time, okay?
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Your motion by Commissioner Sherrill, second by Commissioner Shields. All in favor, raise your right arms, stay down.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I vote aye, thank you.
Okay. Are you coming back here to sign stuff?
Thank you, Sheriff.
Oh God.
Yeah, you come back, you think, come on.
Thanks.
Looks like...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.